It's 5:30. I'll call our city council meeting to order. We're going to have a couple of changes to our order tonight. If you look under regular agenda, item number six, we'll go to executive session on that and then come back out and address it after executive session. Also, we're going to move a presentation of Waste Connections. Are they here?
Yes.
There you are. Okay. We're going to do that after general discussion, so we'll do that a little bit earlier than usual. So, and then item number 20, under Development Services, is removed from the agenda. So those are changes for today. Just want to make sure I knew that ahead of time. So I'm going to ask, Justin, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, sir. Tonight Cory Cook from the Oakdale Methodist Church will lead us to our invocation. We appreciate again y'all providing this service for us every council meeting.
You bet. It's an honor to be here, Mayor. Again, I'm Reverend Cory Cook from Oakdale United Methodist Church, so let's pray. Loving and gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here. God, we pray your blessing upon these servant leaders of our community. We pray your blessing upon our city staff as they work hard to do the work of our city. God, we thank you for this blessed place to live, to work, to play, and to pray. God, fill this time with your power, with your presence, with your Holy Spirit. All this we pray, in the name of our Savior and your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is citizens' general discussion. We have Joyce Ann Cook. Would you state your name and your address?
Yes.
And then did everybody get a copy of the presentation, her information? Alright, so you have three minutes, ma'am.
My name is Joyce Ann Cook and I'm representing S&amp;G Cook and Associates at Stevieville. I live in, actually in Eroth County, but I have a Haco address. So it's 5504 County Road 230, Haco. I am, S&amp;G is representing the 377 marketplace at this time. I don't know if you're aware of the storm fee that is on the water sewage and garbage bill each month. We have a letter here that I've given you a copy of. Our fee increased from $110.31 each month to $482.80 each month. The difference for the year is $4,469.88. The reason I'm concerned about the storm fee is that we have no city drainage on our property. There are no ducts that go into the city sewage or anything. The only thing we have are bathrooms and sinks, of course. But anyway, the water actually drains onto our property from the highway, floods our front parking lot each month. It also drains off of the overpass onto the east side of our property and actually floods that property anytime that it rains about two or three inches, it floods. And we actually have water standing out there all the time. I don't agree with the sewage. I really didn't want to pay the $110.31. I don't see that we're getting any benefit from that. In fact, the city, whenever, back in 66, I believe the overpass was built in 66. At that time, the city fathers, not you guys, told my father-in-law, my husband, it was S&amp;G Cook's lumber at that time. And they told them that they would fix that drainage coming off the overpass. They fixed it on the other side, but not on our side of the road. And so this disturbs me that I should be asked to pay more money for a service that I don't receive. As you know, if it was back in 66, that's over 50 years ago, and the problem has not been solved by the city yet. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Cook? Thank you, ma'am. Alan, you'll get with Monica and Nick and discuss that and get back with her?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, let me try to get this up order here. We're going to have a presentation donation for Waste Management. Come up.
Do you want me to talk first, or just give this to you?
Well, just don't make, you have a discussion, tell us what you want to talk about.
I'm BT. I'm from Waste Connections. This is Adam. Adam's been our site manager down here in Stevieville for six years. And of course, I don't know if y'all know or not, he's been promoted. He's in Iowa Park now. But Adam came up with an idea of us putting together a golf tournament to raise funds for an all-inclusive playground to go out at the park here. And if you're not aware of what an inclusive playground is, that's where children of all skill levels can get the opportunity to come and play, whether they're in a wheelchair or whatever. There's stuff for them to do. Anyway, we're doing this tournament on September 17th. We're in the process of raising other funds, getting teams. So anybody's interested in a team, y'all know Kelly. Get with Kelly, she'd be happy to do that. But we wanted to present a check from Waste Connections as a donation towards this playground. So if you'd like to come forward, I'll present this to you.
It's a big check.
It's a big check.
Get over on the other side.
You need to bend down.
Thank you so much. It's a good start to your golf tournament?
Yes.
I'm sure you lose every dollar here, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to challenge every council member, whether golfer or not, to sign up for the tournament. It's $125 a seat, $500 a team. So $125 a person. So I'm sure that our attorney will probably join in, right? Some goods auction items as well, that's right. And all you have to do is go see our Darks director and she'll take your money, get you signed up. Thank you very much for what y'all done for Stevieville and also for this particular check. Next item, Monica. Is it Alan or Monica?
Monica. Cool. Yes, sir. That's Monica.
Mayor, Council, tonight is the night for us to set our maximum proposed tax rate. We're recommending our voter approval tax rate with the unused increment of .4420 cents per hundred. We received our 2021 tax rate calculation worksheet from Jennifer Carey, the Eroth County Tax Assessor. And it calculates our no new revenue tax rate. This is the tax rate that would apply if we wanted to get no additional revenues whatsoever. And that's .4339 per hundred. The voter approval tax rate without unused increment is .4396 per hundred. And that's where we would get 3.5% additional revenue. It's not quite that way because of our sales tax, that we have the sales tax for property tax relief, so it doesn't quite come as much as we think. And then last year, because our voter approval rate was .4574 and we only approved 45.4550, there was a little bit of increment, .0024, that wasn't used. So you, I think you can keep it for up to three years and then it falls off. So with that additional .0024, the voter approval tax rate with the unused increment is .4420 per hundred. The de minimis rate would have been .4684 per hundred. That's the rate that if you want to add additional $500,000 to your budget, you could. The thing about that one is you have to have your budget posted by July 16th because you have to have it posted 30 days before you approve the tax rate, which would be August 16th, and you have to have that done by August 16th so that it can be on the November ballot, should they get a petition and want to have an election. So by having it that early, that kind of knocked us out. The additional tax levies for the 2020, over the 2020 rate, for the no new revenue rate would be 27,591. The voter approval tax rate without the unused increment would be 114,981. And then the voter approval tax rate with the unused increment would be $151,778. Tonight, you can choose any rate above, obviously, except for the de minimis or less. What you need to keep in mind is that whatever maximum you set tonight, you cannot adopt a rate higher than that. You can always adopt a rate lower. You just cannot adopt a rate higher than that. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Monica?
This is not setting the tax rate.
No, this is setting a proposed maximum. We won't actually set the tax rate until we adopt it in September.
Anybody else? Okay, before we go into item number two, or make the motion about that, we have one person in the audience, Bruce, wants to come and visit with us. So we're going to let you get. Bruce, if you tell us, everybody I think knows who you are, but tell us who you are and your address, and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Bruce Delator. I live at 1595 Glenwood, here in Stevieville. I saw that the taxes are on the agenda for tonight, and I don't know how many people I speak for in my circumstances, but I'm a senior living on a fixed income. And I would like to have you consider when you do set this tax rate, that property taxes takes one-third of my income. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Bruce? Thank you, Bruce. Appreciate that. Okay. So do I hear a motion from the, from the audience, or from the council?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the voter approval tax rate with unused increment of .442. That's the maximum.
And this needs to be a roll call vote, please.
Well, it has to be a roll call vote. Because we have a motion, we have a second. Who was the second? Alan. He'll have a roll call vote. Place one?
Yes.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four's out here. Place five?
Aye.
Is six?
Yes.
Seven?
Aye.
Eight?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Next item, set a date and time.
So we are required to set the date and time that we'll have the hearing, and it needs to be 30 days after we post our budget on our, with the city clerk and on our website. And we've set that date for August 15th. So we're asking that we set the date to be September 14th at 5:30 in the council chambers here at City Hall at 298 West Washington.
Do I hear your motion?
So moved.
Break to next motion. Gerald, is that you?
Brandon.
Gerald's second, is it?
Brandon.
Oh, it's Brandon? Okay, I'm sorry. That's my bad ear. That's my bad ear, sorry. Alright, does this require, does it not require a roll call vote for that? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Our date, location, and time will be September 14th, 5:30 here in the city council chambers. Anything else, Monica?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of executive staff reorganization of the Stevieville Police Department. So we're returning that over to Chief?
Chief Harris. Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of the council, here at tonight, asking you to consider approval of a reorganization of the executive staff of the Stevieville Police Department. Right now, that staff consists of one vacant assistant chief position and three lieutenant positions that answer to me. Those positions, challenging times for us. Laws passed, policies, projects. And what I'm asking today is, and based on that vacancy, and a few other things, is to reorganize from, take that vacant position, take a lieutenant's position, and convert those to two captains' positions. Now, first I want to mention right off the bat, and working with Monica in the staff here at City Hall immensely, is that result in approximately a $1,200 a year savings by doing that. So not increasing the staffing numbers, just redefining their duties. One for operations, an operations captain, and one for the all support of the operations, operational support captain. And changing that, so it would be the chief, two captains, and two lieutenants. That would be the executive staff of the Stevieville Police Department. Any questions?
Questions for Chief?
Yes, sir.
Chief, do you have the personnel to fill these positions?
Yes, sir, and from internally.
And internally, okay.
And these would be succession planning positions also.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I just want to commend Chief Harris for all the work that you've done since you've been here, not only to help the taxpayers in terms of making budget cuts where you can, but becoming more efficient as a department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
So moved. Second.
See the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Chief, if I could, I want to commend you and your department. And I spoke with you personally about this, about the way your department conducts itself professionally and courteously with regard for all of the citizens. And I think that speaks well of you and your leadership and what you continue to work to instill in our officers as they work the streets and as they deal with our citizens. And I truly appreciate that because the person that came to me was just awestruck because of the professionalism and the courtesy and the way your officers dealt with what could have been a really harsh situation. And I appreciate that.
Mr. Nix, I appreciate that. And as you and I have discussed, that was involving a pursuit and then a foot pursuit and a really bad situation, damage to personal property and so forth. And it all worked out. Everybody was safe, including the violator. So I appreciate you sharing those comments. And the men and women that I lead are top-notch professionals. And I wouldn't trade them for the world. They are awesome.
I agree with that. And thank you for your leadership.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Alan, is that, is item number five yours?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, in mercy of the council, the Texas Legislature passed House Bill 2073F in the legislative session that ended in May. That requires paid quarantine leave as related to COVID for first responders, police, fire, and EMS. It requires 14 days paid leave. Under the law, it cannot interfere with their sick time. The, unless a member of their family has COVID, it is presumed that it is an on-the-job injury, so to speak. It's my understanding there is a date ending this. It is not in the bill. However, I did read recently that it's, I think, September 1st of 2023 that it expires. But it has to be, also by law, it has to be in our policy manual. We have written a proposed policy that tracks House Bill 2073. And it is our respectful recommendation that this ordinance be approved.
Mr. Ricky, talk about it if you want to.
I did review this ordinance that Alan had asked me to take a look at it. And I recommended that it just go to full council instead of going to committee because of the September 1st deadline. The bill's pretty straightforward, what is required, and the ordinance, as it's written, tracks exactly how the bill is. There's nothing extra in it, so.
Do I hear a motion?
With that, I would move to adopt ordinance establishing paid quarantine leave in the policy and procedure manual.
Do I hear a second?
A second, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
Can you, can you automatic, you said it lasts till 2023?
Yes, sir.
So it will have to come back before the council, or can you put an automatic sunset on it?
It's my understanding that the state law is the automatic sunset on it.
Okay. And, alright, so we don't have to include that in?
No, sir.
I believe the bill, as it's written, didn't include a date, so it's hard for us to, we can't really put a date in it because the bill doesn't tell us when.
We received information from TML that there was an expiration, but it's not in the bill.
Okay. And of course, we didn't get any funds from the state to pay for that.
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
But they don't do unfunded mandates anymore.
Yeah, for sure.
Does this apply to any other maladies besides COVID?
No, sir. There are some other presumptive illnesses such as cancer for firefighters, but this bill specifically addresses COVID-19.
I believe it's specifically for communicable diseases.
Well, and that's why I thought that could be some other things.
The way I read it is it's communicable diseases.
It didn't seem to be specific to that one virus to me.
Other questions?
Paid quarantine leave.
See the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Of course, we'd never get charged requiring to do something. It's a good thing to do it. But again, the state's building a wall right now out of state tax dollars, so.
Yes, sir.
They could have paid for some of this stuff. Alright, number, item six, we'll go to executive session. Next item is, Jason is going to present for Steve tonight.
Mr. Mayor, council, if you'll remember, I think the last council meeting, you voted to initiate the process for abandonment of the 700 block of Fifth Street. Since then, we've gone through planning and zoning commission, which got a 3-3 split vote, so no recommendation to council. So we're back here tonight for a final vote from you guys. Basically, this is the undeveloped portion of Fifth that sits between Hyman and Grossbeck. We did go through this process back in 2004, and at that time, we're not able to negotiate a sale of that. Back then, it was undeveloped with no future plans. That situation is still the same, and we have no future plans of development. We do believe that we will be able to negotiate a sale at this time. So we're asking you to pass the ordinance when we get to that point after the public hearing.
Questions? Questions? Here now, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number SC 2021-004. So you want the audience to come and speak in favor of the request? Anybody want to speak in opposition to the request? See now, we'll close the public hearing and we'll go on to matters, consider approval ordinance abandoning the undeveloped portion of Fifth Avenue and other related matters. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next item, 2021-001.
Yes, sir. The next three are all part of kind of the same process. And so this piece covers 422 South Lilian. That currently would be the mobile home park there. And so Mr. Pace is kind of redoing that whole area on South Lilian and 1600 Swan and 1601 Swan. You guys have done a little bit of rezoning related to this. This property, these properties have also been the board of adjustment. And so basically, what we're doing tonight is preliminary plats on all of them. And we're doing the preliminary plat process because there's some public improvements that have to be completed before the final plats are done. And so that's what we're asking tonight, and I'll answer any questions and.
Any questions? I have a procedural question here. Can we, since there are, let me see, one, two, three of the same property, right? The next two or three?
I think they've all got to be considered on their own, though.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I check item 2021-001. You're in a public hearing. Anybody want to come and speak in favor of the request? Want to speak in opposition? Close the public hearing. Consider a preliminary plat of property located at 422 South Lilian, parcel R 33522, blocks eight, blocks five, six, seven, eight of the north side addition of the city of Stevieville, Texas. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PP 2021-001.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? See the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Same situation, sir.
Same situation. Any questions? You're in a public hearing on case number 2021-002. Do you want anybody to come and speak in favor of the request? See now, anybody want to speak in opposition? We'll close the public hearing and consider approval of the preliminary plat of the property located at six, no, wait a minute, I jumped one ahead. No, it is. Item 1600 South, West Swan, parcel R 33564, block 14, lot 5. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PP 2021-002. Second.
Further discussion? See the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
One more time.
One more time. We're in a public hearing on case number PP 2021-003, requesting a preliminary plat location at 1601 West Swan. Anyone want to come speak in favor of the request? Want to speak in opposition? Close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PP 2021-003. Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side opposed. Motion passes. Next item.
Now we can move on to another.
There you go.
Next one is at 2675 Overhill. You guys recently rezoned this property. That's the triangle piece right where Overhill and the Northwest Loop come together. Potential proposed medical facility in there. Again, we're doing a preliminary plat. The reason we're doing the platting this way is there are some public improvements, again, that have to be completed before a final plat can be done. So that's why we're here tonight, and we'll answer any questions.
Question for Jason. Here now, we'll enter a public hearing on case PP 2021-004. Anyone want to speak in favor of the request? Yes, sir. See if you'll state your name and address.
Alright. Again, I'm Reverend Cory Cook, the pastor at Oakdale United Methodist Church. You want my home address or the church address?
Home address.
Home address is 2490 West Frye Street here in Stevieville. And we are in favor of this because we were wanting to sell that one acre piece. And I did notice in the agenda paperwork that it said that it's a replat of the 2.1 acre section, that 2.1 acre. That 2.1 acre section is the part where our building sits, and what we're wanting to sell, you can see in the picture there, is the yellow one-acre triangular piece. So we are in support of this replat.
You have any questions to Corey? Thank you, sir. We're entering into a public hearing. You might want to speak in favor of case number PP 2021-004. Want to speak in opposition? During now, we'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve PP 2021-004. Second.
Motion is second. See to vote all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hasky has just informed me he has a conflict, so he's going to abstain.
Okay. All right. We still have, we don't have to take a roll call vote when that happens. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, motion passes. Next item.
The last one is at 408 Morgan Mill Road, and it's a request to rezone the property from R 1 to B 2. It was heard at P&amp;Z on July 21st, and P&amp;Z voted unanimously to recommend to council to approve the rezone. It's being used as a business and has been used as a business for a really long time.
Back when you were at Charlton, huh?
Yes. The change to zoning is in compliance with our future land use plan.
Questions for Jason. Here now, we'll open a public hearing on case number RZ 2021-012. Anybody want to come speak in favor of the request? Not opposition to the request? Close the public hearing, enter and accept a motion.
Move to approve RZ 2021-012. Second.
Have a second. Motion is second. See to vote all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, motion passes. Thank you, sir. Development Services Committee report. Mr. Huckabee.
All right. So we, the Development Services Committee met on July the 22nd, discussed several different items. We'll kind of go through some of those. The first thing we discussed was reviewing of our zoning and uses within the city, specifically about alcohol sales. There is a, some, I mean, there is a issue on the ballot in November, so to try to get ahead of that for planning purposes and being compliant in that. We made some recommendations that will now go to P&amp;Z, and then we'll come back to City Council from there. Let me see here. Word on here is different. So that's there, okay. The second thing we talked about was our residential incentive program. We have a residential incentive program that was implemented in February 2020, right before COVID happened, so kind of a rough timing for it. But we have had a couple of people utilize that program when renovating houses throughout the community. The goal of that is to help citizens spruce up and remodel their homes in some of the areas that those homes are 80 to 100 years old, to help revitalize some of those communities. One of the issues we found with the housing market being so good in this community is that our number was 120,000 value, and there is, I don't know if you've looked lately, but there's not much for under 120,000 in Stevieville, Texas at all right now. So we have moved to raise that to 200,000 to be able to qualify for the program. And then that was, that was voted by unanimous vote to make those changes from the committee, and I would make that as a motion at this time.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? See to vote all in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, motion passes.
And the last thing is also an issue that will be going in front of P&amp;Z, but we introduced a new zoning classification that's R 2.5, that is a multi, not multi-use, it's a combined use facility, zoning that would allow for townhomes and R1s in the same area. We have a lot of development and a lot of future development that is looking at things like this as people's lifestyles change and what they want in a home. There is a big use for garden-type homes, for townhome-type things. We don't have anything, we did not have anything in our system that differentiated R3 from an apartment complex to townhomes to garden homes. So we, we've, we've created this program, or this new zoning 2.5. Again, it has to go in front of P&amp;Z, which it should within a couple of weeks, and then it would come back in front of council. Again, that takes no action for tonight, and that concludes my committee meeting.
Does that meet the needs, the developer we were talking about?
Several.
Okay. And they're all, they've all aware that it takes P&amp;Z now?
Yeah.
I think there were several that have had to go through the painstaking process of planned developments that this will prevent them.
And make a whole difference.
This is another step to try to be an easier place to develop and build in Stevieville, Texas, and take some of the red tape out of there.
Brandon, I appreciate your leadership in this. Anything else?
Not from you.
Thanks, sir. Financial report. I'm going to turn that over to Monica and Justin. If he has any letters in there.
Mayor, council, this is our financial report for June 30th, 2021, nine months into our fiscal year, and the financial indicators are really better than what we had anticipated, or pretty close to right at what I anticipated in some things. For the property tax, we received 21,000 in June, which resulted in 155 or 2.41% increase over the funds collected through last June. The 6.59 million collected fiscal year-to-date is 99.16% of budget, which is pretty much where we anticipated to be. We received 595,000 in sales tax in June, resulting in 930,000 or 19.73% more than the funds collected through last June. The 5.6 million collected fiscal year-to-date is 90.34% of the 6.24 million budgeted, which is higher than the 73.54% that we anticipated. The target budget for our operating revenue is 22.5 million. We received 23.1 million in revenue fiscal year-to-date, which is 594,000 of our target budget, and that's due to our sales tax and our service charges. The target budget for operating expenditures is 15.7 million. We expended 14.9 million fiscal year-to-date, resulting in 838,000 under the target budget. Our operating revenue received last year was 22.04 million, and the current year was 23.1 million, which is about a million-dollar increase, and that's due to our property tax, sales tax, and our service charges. The operating expenditures last year were 14.08 million, and the current year is 14.9, which is $820,000 increase, and that's due to our costs associated with the COVID-19 prevention stimulus grants to reduce the impact of COVID-19, damage claims, wages, professional fees, advertising, and our gateway planning. For our investments, the total market value of cash and investments on June 30th, 2021, was 44,535,201. This is allocated 3% in demand accounts, 38% in TechStar investment pool, and 59% in our Tech Pool investment pool. We earned $1,319.39 in interest for the quarter. The average yield to maturity for all account types for the quarter was 0.02%. The average yield to maturity for investment accounts was 0.01 for the quarter, and the average yield to maturity for a three-month Treasury bill for the quarter was 0.03%. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Monica?
Can you find a better interest rate?
I'll try.
I know somebody who can.
Matt knows somebody.
Any real questions? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Jeff's not here today. Okay. I'll report from CETA. All right. Next item is a consent agenda.
Mayor, approve, we, I'm sorry, I move, we approve consent agenda as presented.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Same sign opposed, consent agenda is approved. Next item. Comments by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Thursday, August the 12th is the deadline to register for fall sports for Sparg. It's also the last of our TechStar summer concert series for this year. It's Casey Donahue. It'll be from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. Tuesday, the 17th is the council committee meetings. Wednesday, the 18th is the first day of school for Stevieville ISD. It's also the Eraz County United Way Fish Fry from 4:30 to 7:30. Thursday, the 19th, I believe, is the first day of school for Charlton.
That's correct.
So as my wife pointed out last night, we'll have parents learning the traffic patterns and freshmen driving on our streets.
Thanks for the warning.
Yeah, that's what I told her. I said, it's a great two-day...
Young parents, you're just laughing now. Just get ready, ride out.
Thursday, August 26th is the deadline for the trash-to-treasure golf tournament registration. And other than that, Mr. Mayor, I have no other comments.
Leanne.
Friday is Casa Casino Night, so reach out to your local Casa if you'd like to have a good time and raise some funds for a great cause.
I'll just add to the calendar for August that Alan was going over. On Thursday, or Friday, August 6th, we have Charlton graduation. We have two ceremonies, a morning ceremony and an evening ceremony. And then beginning on Friday, August 13th, and the 14th and 15th, we have the freshman move-in experience at Charlton. So we will begin moving in, 17, 18 hundred freshmen probably, those three days. So I'll be getting with Chief Harris to go or something. Be fully aware of what's going to go on because it gets a little, traffic gets a little backed up. So I guess we just need to be aware. We usually send out those Nixle alerts for stuff like that because we do have some traffic in there that will be concerning.
A couple of things. One is first day of school being August the 18th. So everybody remember that those school zones will be back in force and be careful so that Chief Harris' guys and gals don't catch you doing something you shouldn't do in a school zone. Another thing, speaking of Chief Harris, I had the opportunity to ride out with him for a few hours one night a couple of weeks ago, and it's very interesting to see what our police department does. I rode with our new interim fire chief, Chuck Elliott, a year, maybe a year and a half ago.
Were you in the front seat or the backseat?
Which time?
You're front of him or the back?
But it's very eye-opening, and I would encourage any council members who haven't done that yet with both of those departments to do so. And Nick's not here tonight, but I've still got to ride out with Nick's sewer guys, so I told him I would do that.
Bring your layers.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and then one other thing I want to talk about, and I'll try to be quick, but as elected officials, we have certain ethics guidelines we have to follow in campaign finance reports and things that have to be filed. We all know those rules, and I think anytime an individual or a group wants to be active in politics and affecting an election, that's a good thing, and they should have the right to do that. They should also be expected to follow the same transparency that elected officials are supposed to, and they actually are required to follow that transparency if they file for a political action committee. So I would just encourage any political action committees that have had a significant impact on the May election to catch up their financial reports and be transparent, just as we're expected to be.
Alan.
Just appreciate the group of people being here, as always. It's good to see people be active, and just wanted to talk to Mr. Delayer's point for just a little bit on property tax. It is that time of year, and our system is completely broken. The funding system is broken. You heard a mandate done today by the state of Texas that we have to come up with and we have to fund. We've had a council that's kept a very low tax rate compared to a lot of places, and that's put us quite behind on some of those issues, some of our, there's a lot of issues that are out there. So as the tax rate is done, I urge you to look at all your taxing entities and where they are spending and where their tax rates are, because I think you would be shocked at what the city of Stevieville provides for you on the amount of money you pay into them. But the system's broken, and until we pressure our state representatives to change the way that things are funded, it's going to continue to be broken. So keep the pressure on us, keep the pressure on all those other locals, and keep the pressure on your state reps, because that's where actual change is going to actually happen. So, and that's it.
One thing I want to mention is the Waste Connection. Thank you to them again for their $10,000 donation. Kelly has a program she's wanted to implement at the park, and it's a good idea, and so I encourage everybody to sign up for the, it's called Trash to Treasures. And so everybody sign up for that. If you're not going to sponsor a team, sign up to be a golfer, if not a golfer. There's other ways you can donate. There's some other sponsorships and stuff. I'd encourage you to do that. We need a bunch of money to include access for those who have physical and other challenges to access the city park. So I encourage everybody to do that. Any other comments? Hearing none, then we're going to adjourn, not adjourn, recess into executive session in compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Medians Law, Subchapter D, Government Code, Verans, Texas Codes annotated with accordance with Section 551074 Personnel Matters and Deliberation of Rural Property 551.072. We'll be back. We'll be back.
Mayor make a motion?
I'm.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. Mr. Trussell has filed a, what do you call it?
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest report. So he will be voting on this, is to deliberate purchase exchange or lease of real property. We have an item to, it's a change of ordinance. And we discussed in executive session, is that right Stacy? I want to do it.
Oh.
It's about the, okay.
If conflict of interest is in relation to the real property, that ordinance is separate.
He can vote on the ordinance. He can vote on the ordinance, okay.